I'm calling to order our April 22, 2025 CUSD 201 school board meeting. We'll start with roll call.
Adina Hoover.
Here.
Whitney Rogers.
Jessica Redonia.
Here.
Carlos Avia.
Here.
Angela Steckety.
Here.
Kevin Marin.
Here.
Leah Conover.
Here.
Will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll proceed with the approval of minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 8, 2025 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the April 8, 2025 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we have public comment. We have, it looks like we have one person submitted for a public comment. Basically, at this time, I just want to reiterate that this is not an engagement time. The Board will consider your comments in its decisions. For those comments or questions requiring a follow-up response, the Board President or Superintendent will follow up. At this time, we have Gina Allen.
Hi, my name is Gina Allen. Thanks so much for your time this evening. My husband, Jose, and I moved to Westmont in 2019, and we have two children. My oldest, Alba, is almost three and a half years old and is autistic. As her father and I both work full-time, Alba attends daycare at Guiding Hands Academy on 63rd Street off of Cass Avenue. Guiding Hands is located in Westmont, only six minutes and 1.8 miles away from South School, but it's outside of the district's boundaries. I've been informed multiple times, because I have asked multiple times, that the school's transportation policy does not permit any out-of-district busing, and that even though my daughter's IEP calls for specialized transportation as a related service she needs, the school doesn't make exceptions to this policy and will not arrange for her transportation from outside of the district. I'm here today to discuss the rigidity of that transportation policy and what it means for high-risk preschoolers. I understand that the students who attend South are considered high-risk of being behind their peers upon entering the school system, whether that's because they come from a certain socioeconomic background, speak only a foreign language in the home, are born to teenage parents, have developmental delays, or have a disability. I asked South, well, what do working parents do about transportation then? Like, what do you suggest? South suggested that I take my child, who already struggles with transitions, and move her to Westmont Yard, another out-of-district daycare facility that has the ability to bus children to and from South's half-day sessions. I didn't understand that at first, being kind of new to the area. Why would they recommend moving my preschooler to another out-of-district daycare? Then I realized there really are no in-district daycare centers except one. I found Bethel Early Learning Center on the DCFs website. It's a small parochial school. The district has no other solutions but to suggest that a private daycare facility transport children to the local preschool. But even if I was inclined to move my daughter from a daycare where she's thriving to Westmont Yard solely because Westmont Yard is able to bus my child to South, Westmont Yard doesn't actually bus children under the age of four, so that doesn't help children who would transition to preschool from early intervention at age three. At the end of the day, there's no school choice for parents of preschoolers. South is your only option. You can't change districts based on your child's daycare location. There's no option for a full day of school. There's only the half-day, and there's no before-and-after care option. Except for this one solo parochial school, there are no daycare centers within the district that students can be bused to and from under the current policy. As a result, I've had to ask myself, you know, should we change daycares to Westmont Yard or parochial school so Alba can go to school even though we risk regression at best? Should we change our work shift so that we can take her ourselves, though our new shifts will result in less time at home with our children? Should we reduce the amount of hours we work if possible and lose income? Should I quit working entirely and try stay-at-home parenting, hope that I've budgeted properly for a one-income household, and then that a decent job will be waiting for me when the kids are both in school full-time? Should we simply skip preschool altogether, bring Alba to private therapy instead, hold our breath each year until we hit our insurance's out-of-pocket maximum, and then continue being zombie parents constantly tired from shuttling around from appointment to appointment during business hours and having to make up lost time at work in evenings or on weekends? I recognize that the questions I've asked are questions all parents ask themselves, that everyone has logistical problems, but there's a particular risk here to these at-risk preschoolers, some of whom may yet have undiagnosed disabilities because so many disabilities are incapable of being diagnosed at preschool age, or the waitlist for an appointment with a developmental pediatrician right now is a year-long, or even longer. The unintended consequence of a rigid transportation policy with respect to these preschoolers is that at-risk children may not be receiving the services they need. Alba came from early intervention and was eligible for preschool when she turned three in January, but she hasn't started receiving services yet because I don't know what, I haven't made a decision about what to do yet. My employer's generosity and flexibility has limits, and I told him this was my temporary schedule. It's going to be temporary. She's going to school soon. I'm concerned not just about my child and my family, but all families that need to utilize a daycare center and need to get their child speech occupational and other therapy services. So my questions for the Board are, you know, is there really no possibility of making an exception to the current transportation policy for my daughter? If not, can the policy be modified? Perhaps a new route specifically for preschoolers could be created that could run down Cast to the five large preschools off 63rd, Chester Brook, Peter Pan, Westmont Yard, Guiding Hands, Fairview Kinder Care? Four out of five of those are in the village of Westmont, so for a new parent who shows up and doesn't understand district boundaries, you know, you think, I live in Westmont, school's in Westmont, my preschool's in Westmont. There shouldn't be an issue here.
Just ask you to wrap up, please.
Oh, yes, sorry. Has any research been done to determine what the needs of incoming and current families are? If so, can that be shared? And then, can I help in any way? I'm not sure what skills I have that would be useful, but perhaps I could do some grant research or gather data from parents or daycares. I want to do whatever I can if it means that I can help prevent at least one high-risk, you know, kid from slipping through the cracks. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no other speakers, we'll move along to the agenda. Thank you. We, at this time, have staff recognition and all the presenters. And first, we have Alice Riley. We are honored to recognize and celebrate the retirement of F. Alice, a beloved and respected LBS resource teacher who has served our district since 2001. Most recently, supporting our K and first-grade students at Miller, Alice has shared her expertise and advocacy for learners with unique needs. Her calm presence, support, and ability to meet every child where they have made a lasting difference in countless young lives. Colleagues describe Alice as not only a trusted educator, but also a mentor and team player. Her contributions have helped shape an inclusive and nurturing learning environment across our schools, and her legacy will continue to inspire educators and students alike. We thank Alice for her years of devoted service and wish her all the best in her well-earned retirement.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lindsay Peters, Principal of Manning, and I'm here to celebrate Carrie Frank, who is here this evening. So I have some words for her. It is an honor to take a moment this evening to celebrate someone who has quietly and consistently shaped our school community in so many ways, Carrie Frank, as she prepares to retire at the end of this school year. Carrie's career spans decades, I won't say how many, and buildings within this district. Within District 201, she was an early leader in technology, gifted education, and back when computer labs were new and tech integration was still uncharted territory. She worked in nearly every school in our district, always with flexibility, a spirit of innovation, and a willingness to support others through change. But it's been in the last eight years, the time that I've had the privilege of working alongside of her, where I've seen firsthand just how much impact she truly has made. As a second-grade teacher, Carrie brings calm, consistent, and compassion to her second-grade team of colleagues, who we often have said share a brain, which I really think has become true, and I'm sad that that's going to shift after this year. She builds strong relationships with her students, always leading with patience and positivity, but her impact stretches far beyond classroom walls. As a new teacher mentor, Carrie has become one of the very first faces that our new staff in the district sees, and each year, she's tasked with providing ongoing support along with her teammates and guidance to new teachers, reminding them that this work is both challenging and deeply human. One moment that stands out and one I'm always going to remember and take with me is when she shared one of the activities that the team was going to do this, one of these most recent years, and it was the story of the marigold effect. Marigolds are great companion plants. If you don't know, I've become a gardener myself. And the analogy was used with new teachers is to find people that are going to bring the best out of you and to be positive. And she reminded me that environments that, where it can be really hard and really tough in moments to find people to lean on and be intentional about who you surround yourself with, so that's something that I carry about with me in those times because sometimes we need to be the marigold and sometimes we need the marigolds around us. Carrie, thank you for the years of care, the quiet leadership, and the way you've poured into others without ever needing the spotlight. You will be missed, and you will always be remembered. Congratulations on a beautiful career and well-deserved retirement.
I'm Dr. Kevin Weack, and I'm the Principal of Westmont High School. And tonight, we get a chance to recognize and celebrate the career of Sue Pacelli, who's been the nurse at Westmont High School for the last 14 years. Sue, I just want to say thank you for so many years of service. A little bit about Sue. She's here tonight with her husband, Rich. They've been married for 40 years. It's quite the accomplishment. She also has three children, Nate, Patrick, and Gabby. Patrick's actually a graduate from Westmont High School, and Sue told me today that without the help of LeAnn and our TAs, or with the help of them, Patrick was able to graduate, and he's an alumni now of Westmont High School. So she was very grateful and thankful for all the support from them. So she's been with us for 14 years. Prior to that, though, she was at Loyola University Hospital, where she worked in the NICU. She did that, and then she had her family, and she came over to Westmont. She worked as a sub and part-time for about three years. She then got her chance to be full-time with us due to a misfortune of one of her colleagues. With that, though, she said one of her fondest memories was the fact that everyone brought down all these sweets and treats to her during her first year, where she said she indulged in that, and that was difficult, but she felt very welcomed and supported in her first year, and that's one of her fond memories. Sue did a great job of really helping us navigate the COVID experience, the pandemic. She did a phenomenal job in terms of communication, supporting families and students, work through that so that we can, you know, help our students be successful in all the capacities possible. One of the things she's looking forward to after retirement, though, is going up to Wisconsin, where she has a new summer house or vacation house, and her family's going to go spend time up there. She's got grandchildren right now. She's expecting another one in June, so that's something that she's truly looking forward to. What she's going to miss, though, is really being a part of, you know, Westmont High School and being with her staff and her teammates. She really had a strong bond with them. She's going to miss seeing them every day. One of the things she did say, though, is, you know, something for us to consider is that the challenges and the support that our students need now is much different than it was when she first started, and that we have to do everything we can to really support them on a daily basis with that. And Sue, you did a phenomenal job, not just supporting our students, but also supporting our staff on a daily basis, and for that, we will always be grateful. Thank you for an outstanding career with us. Thank you for all of your support. Congratulations, and good luck with your next chapter in life. So, thank you.
Jack Walderman, Superintendent, and I am here to honor our colleague, my friend, our friend, such a dedicated, talented, intelligent colleague of ours, Dr. Nadine Norris, who, when I think of Nadine, the first thing I think of is servant leader. What is it going to take to help out my colleagues? Because we're focused on students, and that's what Nadine has always been about. What is it going to take? She's a problem solver. She uses her wisdom and her skills to do whatever it takes to better our district with a focus on her colleagues and our students, and she is the ultimate team player that way. Ever since I first met her, and that's what her reputation is, how can I get the resources to make this a better district to serve our students? That's Dr. Nadine Norris. There was a time where every student in this district didn't have technology, right? One-to-one. So Nadine led that effort in a masterful way, in a fiscally responsible way, in a way to get people training. That's Nadine Norris. She fought for coaches in this district and actually helped to usher an era where it's an expectation that we have coaches in the buildings supporting our amazing teachers. She's here tonight with her wonderful husband, Jeff, and we're fortunate because she's not going to completely leave us, but the years she has given us as a servant leader, as a problem solver, as the most ethical, driven leader, if we need Nadine, it's a whatever-it-takes response. There's been times when I had to call on her, late times, weekends, doesn't matter. Nadine is going to be there to serve others in this district, and it has been such an honor to work with you, and everybody knows you as somebody who is here to give all of your talent and wisdom for the betterment of our students and our teaching staff and your fellow administrators. So thank you so much, Dr. Norris, for your amazing work and your time here in CUSD 201.
I want to also add, Sue Pacelli, it was great working with you for 11 years.
It's all very supportive by you.
Did great for our kids.
Next, we'll go to Those Who Excel, and we'll start with Kevin.
Right. We did have a video that was supposed to be a surprise for Ms. Jacobowski over here from our students, but I'll share that with her tomorrow. Just some love from our students, just expressing how much they appreciate her and how much she means to them in terms of inspiring them. But tonight's a really special night for us. We get a chance to recognize, you know, Ms. Jacobowski, who is a community member and an alum, as well as somebody who's been in CUSD 201 longer than I have in terms of, like, helping mentor our students, being a great role model, inspiring our students to really dream big, to push themselves outside their comfort zone, and that's just truly who she is. You know, she's not just an English teacher. She sometimes can be a mom, a friend, somebody that, you know, holds high expectations for students when sometimes they don't want to live up to that. You know, she works tirelessly for our students in terms of setting high expectations, supporting them, finding out what kind of support that they need in terms of closing the learning gap and emotional gaps so that they can feel confident and they can be successful when it comes to academics, and that's expressed in this video. You know, students wouldn't just do this disingenuously. They really care about Ms. Jacobowski because that's who she is as a person, and that's how she works with not just our students, but with our faculty. You know, her role is just an English teacher, the department coordinator, instructional coach. She does a lot for our culture. You know, you can't necessarily label all the things she does for our school, and we've had a lot of success because of individuals like Ms. Jacobowski. And she sets the tone for our building in terms of working hard and holding people to high expectations and pushing beyond boundaries that they thought were even possible. And that kind of leadership, you can't put a price tag on that. You can't quantify it. You can't truly express that in words. So I feel very lucky and blessed to have her as one of our building leaders, but somebody that is so passionate about our students and our school and our community, who gives everything that she has on a daily basis, whether it's at 5:00 in the morning responding to a text message, or 8:00 at night putting together a Google Form, or grading papers until midnight. These are the types of things that our teachers, especially Ms. Jacobowski, do on a daily basis that sometimes we take for granted, and sometimes it goes unnoticed. But it's my responsibility as the principal to be the biggest cheerleader and the person that wants to celebrate and recognize the hard work of our teammates. And tonight, I'm so proud to be able to express this in terms of Ms. Jacobowski being recognized for Those Who Excel. She truly embodies that, and this is a well-deserved honor. So congratulations, Ms. Jacobowski. Thank you for all of your hard work. Keep it up. We need you. Tomorrow's a big day. We got our juniors taking the ACT, so we're hopeful that they, you know, they step up like they have all year. They've been working hard, and she's, you know, one of the people that helps instill this confidence that our students are going to have tomorrow morning when they start that test. So, thank you. Congratulations.
I have to add, because I've worked with Anna for the last 13 years, there are several students who would never have made it throughout high school without Anna. They never would have graduated without her, and I'm so proud of her because she's persevered, she's a constant learner, and now she's a national leader when it comes to literacy and helping teams literally all over the nation help to become stronger in their practices. So she not only has a powerful impact on our students at Westmont High School, but she is truly a national leader and recognized by some of the best in the business for her expertise.
I'm going to add a little bit too, just as a testament as a parent. Talk about someone who's instilled confidence, and I've seen it with my firstborn. I have a senior right now, truly, from a quiet young lady who, you know, was daunted by testing and this, and you've instilled so much of her that I, like, I just am very happy with what you've done and all of what you do, and I see those responses from the kids and thanks for cheering the kids on the games and everything. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
We're going to continue with Elinda Melendez. Elinda serves as a full-time dual-language teaching assistant at Miller Elementary. Her profound knowledge of bilingual education and second language acquisition has been a cornerstone of her exceptional work performance. She seamlessly bridges linguistic and cultural gaps, creating a welcoming and inclusive environment where every student feels seen, heard, and empowered in their kindergarten and first-grade classrooms. Whether supporting academic instruction, fostering students' language skills, or engaging in cultural celebrations, Elinda enriches the educational experience in ways that resonate deeply with our diverse school community. Elinda comes in every day with a smile and has a positive attitude. We are so grateful to have Elinda as a member of the Mustang family and is a perfect candidate to receive the Those Who Excel Award. Next, we have Kristy Pyattak. Let me say that again. Thank you. It's like, oh, it's second. Kristy serves as a full-time reading and math interventionalist at Miller Elementary School. Kristy is an outstanding reading and math interventionalist who impacts and extends far beyond the classroom. Her expertise, dedication to student success, collaborative spirit, and positive influence on our school community makes her an invaluable asset. One of Kristy's greatest qualities is her commitment to ensure student success. She embodies the belief that every student deserves the opportunity to succeed regardless of background or learning challenges. This belief drives her to go above and beyond to ensure that all students feel valued, supported, and capable of achieving their fullest potential. Kristy demonstrates a tireless commitment to building a school culture that is inclusive, respectful, and geared towards the success of every child. Kristy is well-deserving of the Those Who Excel Award, and we are so thankful she is a Mustang. And next, we have Nancy Nannalik. Nancy serves as a full-time reading and math interventionalist at Miller Elementary School. Nancy is an exceptional educator whose commitment to students, colleagues, and the broader community has created a lasting impact. She played a pivotal role in developing and implementing the district's dual-language and English learner programs, enhancing instructional practices and ensuring families were informed and supported. Her expertise in language acquisition and data-driven instruction has consistently driven student achievement, while her compassion and dedication extend well beyond the classroom. Whether raising funds for families in need, stepping in during staffing shortages, or leading parent workshops, Nancy leads with empathy, initiative, and an unshakable belief in equity. Her presence has strengthened school culture, fostered meaningful relationships, and uplifted both staff and family in powerful, enduring ways. We are proud to have her accomplishments as a Mustang and for winning ISBE's Those Who Excel Award. Now, I invite Lindsay.
This year, it's an honor to recognize and celebrate Carrie Bowerline as a recipient of Those Who Excel Award. She has, once again, many roles in this district, and for that, she was nominated. I've had the pleasure of getting to know her, not just in my tenure at Manning, but I actually met her while working at the high school many, many years ago, and from that time, I knew that I wanted to learn from her and still learn every single day. In a small district like ours, it's powerful to have educators like Carrie, teachers who truly understand the art of what teaching is and understand that we are too, learning every single day about our profession and growing continually as Carrie does, because it is truly an art and a science, and somewhat of crafting as well, which she likes to do just in her side, in her spare time. Carrie leads by example, not only through her instructional practices, but also through her leadership roles, which are volunteer, might I add. As the Vice President of the WTA, she works collaboratively with administrators and colleagues and is always with a student-first mindset, which we see poured into every day in the classroom, every conversation that you have, and it's truly important to understand that she is always solution-minded and will always come to the table trying to find what is best for all parties involved. Her recent partnership in the classroom with a new teacher has been such a great experience to both observe and has been inspiring even for myself as an administrator, where she's able to model her own expertise and share great examples for students as well, and she pushes so many of our students to go above and beyond what they could even expect for themselves. She pours her energy into developing others while striving for herself to learn, which I know sometimes I push her, and I know that she pushes me, but I think that is where the best learning takes place, and it makes her truly special. Please join me in congratulating Carrie on this well-deserved recognition. We're lucky to have her. This district is lucky to have her, and the staff is better because of her.
I want to just add, Carrie is an amazing teacher, but she and her partner Heidi Nardini should write an article or a book on union leadership, because they will protect their people and do right by them while remaining always student-centered and problem-solving-oriented, and they are models for what union leadership should be about in this country, to go with her exceptional teaching. And I'm so grateful for you and your leadership in this district and all you give to us. Thank you, Carrie.
Good evening, my name is Nadine Norris, and one of my many roles is to be the Director of Technology, and I want to thank Mr. Balderman for his kind words, that they meant a lot to me, thank you so much. I'm honored to recognize my exceptional team of technology specialists, including James Carrera, Jeremy Bratista, Pedro Rodriguez, and Chris Springer. They've been nominated for the ISBE Those Who Excel Award. Their work exemplifies what it means to be genuinely student-centered in an educational technology support role. The team consistently goes above and beyond their traditional roles. Jeremy co-sponsors the Asian American Club, the STEM Club, the school plays, fostering creativity and inclusivity. Pedro collaborates with the junior high technology service team and mentors a few in fourth and fifth grade students, encouraging student innovation and collaboration. Chris is patient, and her good humor, we all know, anyone, any parent, any staff member who's had to call about Skyward Questions, she is your gal. Jim is the person you want when issues arise that seem unsurmountable. The commitment to our students is evident through everything they do. They respond immediately to classroom technology needs, implementing systems that support diverse learners. Last week during testing, they just walked around. They were told by teachers, "We're just relaxed just knowing you're here." They understand the purpose is not just maintaining the networks and repairing devices, their primary mission is to put students at the heart of their work, providing and maintaining the right tools to do their job. It is my honor to thank them for this, for their role. Thank you very much.
We have another person that I would like to start to recognize, but I feel like a fellow board member will also do the same. And I want to take this time to recognize Angela Steckety. Angela joined our team when she was elected four years ago to this position, but that's not where, as I've seen and witnessed, her work began. I knew Ange before she knew me, because she was an active parent and collaborator and team person, putting students first, I think since I moved into the district, and I've always seen you. You were a world model then, and you still are, taking on more, continually putting more on your plate, but always. And we know probably some of your huge giving time is not recognized as a board member or a PTO member or have you, you're always giving to kids in this district. So I want to take this time and say it's an honor. I know you're not done, because I know you can't stay away from these kids in Westmont, so I'm going to see you somewhere, you said, on the committees at least. But I want to, myself, I want to recognize you and thank you for all the time and love you put into this community.
I want to echo that too. We have an amazing board, and Ange, you are people-centered to the core. And I'm so grateful that we've had the chance to work together, and who you are as a human being is inspiring to me, and all you give to others, and your compassion is so deep, your commitment to our community is so incredible. It's a very special gift that you've given to our community, and I feel honored to have worked with you.
I just want to know who's going to keep up with all the upcoming events whenever you're gone. I also knew Ange before she knew me because of the same, the same thing. Anytime I attended anything, you were there, whether, I didn't even know you were on the school board, and you're always involved in everything, and I hope you stay involved.
Okay, I'm going to miss having you on the board here, but I will see you around the lounge. So, thank you.
Yeah, it's been nothing but awesome to get to know you as a board member for the last four years. I know you so much better, but I know you're, I know you're deeply dedicated, and we'll see you all everywhere.
And I echo what everybody said, honestly, I think it's hard to capture everything you've contributed in words. I think everybody's done a really nice job, but your presence will be deeply missed around this table. I think we're hard-pressed to find somebody who cares so deeply and is so inclusive and thoughtful and compassionate. And when Adina said something about the love you have, love is like the word that resonates that I think of when I think about you and how you've led, and will continue 100% to lead in this community in all kinds of ways. We'll miss you.
It does.
I want to give a quick shout-out to Mike too, her husband, because I think he lives in our concession stand.
Thank you, Mike.
He's been voluntold many times.
Yeah, so many. Voluntold positions. Okay, we don't, we're not going into class, closed session at this time. We are moving along to our presentation of election results. They have been posted in board docs. They have been posted in both board docs to look at specific numbers, I don't have that here. But the results have been attached there, and they were certified and made official today, April 22nd, 2025. So I'm going to call, before I say that, are pictures being taken? Should I instruct?
I guess, yeah. I think they're going to take their pictures. I don't know if she wants to record this.
Okay.
I think yeah, it's getting the pictures, yeah.
Okay, she got it. So I'm going to invite our, I think they have it, either thing, is it? I'm going to invite our newly-elected board members for this cycle to step forward, and we are going to read the oath of office. So we have Leah Conover, Jessica Redonia, Kevin Marin, and Lauren Zakiri. Do they face that one?
You can't have the cameras.
So you guys can grab this, because I'm sure you're not going to remember as I read it. So you can grab it, hold it, and turn around.
Give it here.
Thank you. Right, do you raise your right hand? So at this time, you'll repeat after me, except for the part where you say your own name. I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education or, I'm sorry, Board of Education of CUSD 201 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
Now I only swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of the U.S.D. 201 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
I further swear or affirm that. I shall respect taxpayers' interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall respect taxpayers' interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at the public board meeting.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
I shall foster with the Board's extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for CUSD 201.
I shall foster with the Board's extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for CUSD 201.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall serve as education's key advocate, advocate on behalf of students in our community school to advance the vision for CUSD 201.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students in our community schools to advance the vision for CUSD 201.
I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district towards fulfilling the vision the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Congratulations.
We'll have everyone up in a minute, but I'm just going to, before you guys sit down. So it's part of our custom at this time when we have a new election and swearing-in of our next student board, I mean, sorry, school board member to our district, that we entertain a motion to adjourn, send?
Send.
Send. So this is a temporary adjournment. We do have some refreshments, but we will continue our board meeting, board meeting with our new member. So I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned for the moment. So let's stand for a picture.
Do you guys want to get some pictures with Ange or something?
Yes, yes. Okay, so now, we're going to do pictures now. So we're adjourned for a minute. Okay, good.
Am I, are we, the whole board?
Yeah. And if you come up with this, we'll start.
What do you all want me to do, please?
Those are off-centered. Yours is. They're perfect, right there. I got you.
Satisfy yours.
Actually, a little. A little bit.
It matters. I think that's about, like, right in the middle. Just that PR meeting, guys. Right, right, Ange. Come on. You guys are so funny.
What is actually happening?
I felt like I was in trouble. Right in the middle. Right over that girl, make it come out of your head. I don't know what. Is Jack going to come in? Where is the gas? He's looking outside.
Say, what?
Close the gap.
What you want me to, out of the way, I got it.
Your photo bombing.
I am not photo bombing.
One, one. Great. Is the woman the one? Yeah. Hey. Can we have a two? Yeah. We want one in the corner like this.
Yeah. You don't want that.
Okay.
People run through the exits.
Look here.
You're throwing up.
Don't yell.
Please don't make her mad. Come on, yeah.
Please.
Don't shoot her around.
Jack had that, I think, and it's a very common line. Relax. I also really wear a picture of you. Absolutely. That's really Jack. I was trying to take a picture. Oh. Get some cake.
We'll get some cake and stuff.
Yeah. We'll be reconvening and coming back in a few minutes.
Closing and coming back.
Hmm? Not for you, no, unless you want to get a picture of the board. Get cake.
What?
You got it.
No, not, I'm not, I think so, right? Yeah.
Did they say where?
How long is this break?
Five minutes. Did you see me during the plan?[1553.71] Your photo bombing.
I am not photo bombing.
Best thing we want to do.
One, one. Great. Is the woman the one?
Yeah.
Hey.
Can we have to do it again?
Yeah. We want one in the corner like this.
You don't want that.
Okay.
People run through the exits.
Look here.
You're throwing up.
Don't go.
Please don't make her mad. Good idea.
Please.
Don't shoot around.
Jack had that. Relax. Relax. I also really wear a picture of me. Absolutely. That's really Jack. I was too much.
Oh.
Get some cake.
We'll get some cake and stuff.
We'll be reconvening and coming back in a few minutes.
Proposing and coming back.
Hmm? Not for you, no. Unless you want to get a picture of the board.
Get cake.
What?
You got it.
No. Not, I'm not. I think so, right? Yeah. Did they say where?
How long is this break?
Five minutes. Did you see me during the plan?
How long is this break? Oh. 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 Not for you, no. Unless you want to get a picture of the board.
Get cake.
What?
You got it.
No. Not, I'm not. I think so, right? Yeah. Did they say where?
How long is this break?
Five minutes. I wrote you. Did you see me during the plan?
... our roles on the board, so it doesn't stop. And generally, you heard the oath earlier that we're all equal partners in this and we, together, we make one decision. It doesn't take apart from the thoughts that we individually have, but when a decision is made, we have one and then we have leaders with that. So we start with the president role. At this time, I will nominate first?
You have to nominate.
So I nominate Leah Canover for our board member president role.
And then if you ask if there are any other nominations.
Are there any other nominations for board president? There are none. The chair will entertain a motion to name Leah Canover as Board of Education president for two-year term.
No, we went to one year. It used to be two, we went to one.
Policy says two. We updated. The policy says two.
Updated.
Yeah.
Can I get a second?
I second that.
And then we'll have roll call.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Congratulations. And we'll move to the office of vice president. I'll take nominations for the vice president.
Carlos Avia.
Are there other nominations for the role of vice president? The chair will entertain a motion to name Carlos Avia as the vice president of the Board of Education for a two-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Secidi? Sorry. Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations. And now we will move to the officer role of secretary.
I nominate Jessica Redonia.
Are there any other nominations? The chair will entertain a motion to name Jessica Redonia as our secretary for the Board of Education for a two-year term.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations. Next, we move into the appointment of board committees. So for many years, the Board of Education has maintained committees to work for... May I ask one question? Do we switch or...
You have to sign up again. Everyone should have a sheet in front of them, which they're going to fill in and give back to me tonight.
I'll just trade this role.
Oh, yeah. Oh, we need right now to switch. Yeah, you can. Yes. Do we have to...
Do you want to switch right now because you are like at the new board?
Maybe after closed?
Okay.
Yeah. Let's keep a good thing going.
For many years, the Board of Education has maintained committees to work with the administration examining key, certain key elements in the CUSD 201 operation. The committees have been finance, policy, strategic planning, facilities, and public relations. As designed, the committees have been actively involved in several important areas. The administration has appreciated this type of board involvement. It has been custom of the new board...
Here.
Okay. All right. So we have, usually what we've done is not necessarily nominating, but we have a sign-up sheet and we've kind of held to that. So this will be passed around as we move along the agenda. You sign up for committees and it is asked, like from our board kind of rules, that we sign up for at least one committee, but you can do more than one. If there is three in a committee, we just, we kind of, we organize in a way that if three members are present, that we have to post, for our opening, open meetings act, that we have to post those meetings, make it aware because three members are present at one time, so.
I think we've talked about doing just regardless because we just need to post our committee meetings.
Right.
Well, we just, that's one way to communicate our committee meetings.
Right. But we post it in a certain way, which is fine, but actually even more than that, many times because of our schedules and work schedules, there have been, you know, two people. So we'll pass that around and then we document once we kind of assure where everybody is placed at that time. And we definitely discuss this more at our board retreats to be determined. Any other questions or comments regarding the committees?
Didn't we adjust Strategic to be a board? We had some Strategic Planning Committee meetings last two years and I feel like we adjusted them to just be a board. What did we do? You remember what I'm talking, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, we couldn't, we've done like a district-wide meeting. It was part of our strategic planning and so...
I feel like we called it, but I don't know if it's this Strategic Planning Committee or if we called it like just a board, like everybody was on it.
Oh, yes.
So everyone signed up for Strategic.
We will leave it there for now and then it's something that definitely we should have. I think the last big one that we had before the referendum was like district-wide with multiple administrators looking at our goals and reexamining those. And I know something that you've wanted us to look at district-wide to do like some more shaping and redeveloping where we are and making it, you know, something that's current and works well with us. So I think it's something this board just has to organize a little bit better when we want to do that and how you want to do that, Jack, and kind of handle that. But I think it'll be an important and very informational gathering exercise for our community once we do have it, so I look forward to that. We'll move with the agenda and establish our board meetings. So the chair will entertain a motion that the regular meetings of the Community Unit School District 201 Board of Education be held as identified on a notice schedule of regular meetings of the Board of Education of Community Unit School District 201 as presented. So it's something that's uploaded to the board docs before we vote those, before we take the motion, just want to, at this time, see if there are any questions or comments about the list of meetings or the way that...
I do have a question or comment. I don't know which it is. We'll see as it comes out. I thought we talked about maybe mixing up location once in a while and I know that we can, we can do that prior to a meeting. We can change the location and I really want us to think a little harder and maybe actually put some meetings at the high school, at Manning, at the, at the actual buildings themselves. This is nice, but I think with everything that we've been talking about, I think it's really important for us to consider holding meetings in the buildings themselves.
And that is, we are obligated every year to post this by a certain date.
Yeah, right.
With the constraints that, you know, with recording and use staff to get those things, that's the juggle of it and scheduled times, it's hard to schedule that like almost a year out, but recognizing that, that, you know, we are always forward-thinking if it's something we plan to do and get ahead of it, that, you know, if there's a change in location, which we've done before, that we plan that early enough that we can get a schedule. We can check to see if we have our tech, our tech support available to do that because that's also like considering just that there, is it employees of the village or the district? That we just consider those things, that that's, there's a cost in an organization of that.
Like I like that idea. Do we do committee meetings at the various buildings instead? Because those aren't televised, you know?
I definitely love the idea of the committee meetings being right before board meetings. So wherever the board meetings are happening, it makes, it makes it better for the public.
Well, and I did jot down a note of like the, this room for the committee meeting isn't, it's not set.
It's not great.
Like, let's have a great conversation.
I agree. That's part of the reason that I'm thinking of.
Yeah, I was thinking of it earlier today. So we do need to have, we should have a conversation about that, right? It came up at the last board meeting via public comment, but I think it has come up a couple of times of moving, right, our, our location. So we should have a larger conversation about that as a board, if that's where we want to go to. And then also, we need to talk about committee meeting dates also, something that we, we have to get this schedule out, the board meeting schedule out and posted by a certain date. I think it behooves us to solve our committee meeting dates as well very quickly. Those are not as required here, but then we can really take a look at, this is our board meeting, here's when we, here's our facilities and, and have those dates set so that we can all get them on our calendars, our community can get them on their calendars. So we can have that deeper conversation in like a meeting or two. Maybe it's something that we work on over the summer. What do you guys think? Or would you want to work on it sooner? Would you want to work on it like...
No, I don't think it's a top priority. I just, since we're, since we've got it in front of us, it reminded me that we had talked about it and that, yeah, having the conversation sometime so that even, I mean, I don't, I don't know the exact number. What are there, like 18?
Seventeen.
Seventeen meetings on here? So like if two of them were, were at one of, you know, if we could get, if we could get into each of the buildings, great, that would be four or five, I guess, with so, you know, so.
I just, I just want to keep in mind my thoughts on that, that, you know, why I agreed to set that, but as we think about it, so we say we want our community with us in those buildings. And I know it separates things, but as I said, many of our board meetings are minimal. We get minimal attendance. We get large attendance with our committee meetings and that's where we want the heart of people seeing our building. So I just, I know we said we don't have a conversation, but just to think of if we want our, a larger audience and take advantage of that, let's take it for the times that committee meetings where people are more involved, it's not as formal, that we have those in our buildings and press for those because they're longer, they're different days. I think we, I love that we have our committee meetings for myself as a schedule, like right before our board member meetings, but sometimes I feel like we need more than an hour and those larger ones that, those are the ones I want more of the community involved in, in our buildings for that because there's more involvement, more participation.
I agree. And so I think like as we, when we ever revisit this in a couple of weeks, like I think it makes a lot of sense for our facilities committee meeting to be in the buildings. And so figuring out like once we have the schedule of meetings or, I mean, I guess deciding, I think whichever committee meetings we can, let's attach them to board meetings. But I think we could probably all agree that facilities makes a lot of sense to be in the buildings. And are there any others that we feel strongly about?
So getting schedules out and seeing, I think it's still a goal to see like two meetings, like you said, Carlos. Two meetings be on location? Let's figure it out and get all of that and, and see if we can get a schedule ahead of time so we can get all of our support that we need, whichever is possible.
Jack, do you think it's possible to have potential dates for each of these committee meetings for next year? By the next board meeting, two board meetings? Because it kind of sounds like we need to get to, let's get our committee meeting scheduled and maybe that's the board meeting that we have a deeper conversation about what should be where or whatever, right? So, and I know that Edith was talking about potentially matching up some of those committee meetings, some of the, at least the PR with events, like our big, like STEM Night worked out really, really well, right? Like, do you think that it's realistic? Because I, because I do think that a big one that we had this past year was, and the last couple of years is, we scheduled these meetings for the whole year and I don't want to get, I don't want to fall backwards in that because we can always adjust. We need, yes, we need time, we need to know, right? But we can always adjust something that's already scheduled. It's much harder to schedule something that is, that is not, not even there, right? So I, I do think that at least having the starting date for all of our, for all the committee meetings for next year set so that we can all start there and then maybe, but do you, so, yeah, I know Edith has some ideas about this as well. So do you think it's realistic to have those dates? And I realize we've got...
With committee meetings?
At least the first.
Scheduled connected to the board meetings?
Scheduled.
Schedule?
Separate or, you know, just at least starting that, here's the first meeting for finance, here's the first. That's the minimum, I think.
I think they have to be scheduled for the year. Look, the finance meetings are like, there's, they're already, we have this many and we have to have this many, like there should, we already know when the finance meetings already have to be because they're controlled by the budget to a lot of, an extent, to a huge extent. And we've had all these meetings this year and many of them prior to our board meetings already. So we've already got a bit of a base schedule to work off of.
We, we could have a rough draft in May and a solid draft in June.
We can always, we can always add committee meetings, right?
Always add.
Yeah, so let's do our base and then if we want to add a finance committee meeting separate from the board meetings.
We can, we can always add, but we should have our base, we should have our, policy has to meet twice a year. We already know that when press, right? That's already, that's driven by press also, right? So like that stuff that is, that we've already had scheduled and I think PR met every other month this year or tried to meet every other month this year.
The part of it is that you also want the locations, right? You want, we want those established or you want to just do the committees first?
I think the committee meetings are the most important and then we can go from there. I don't want, I don't want location to hold up us scheduling the committee meetings for the year.
Okay. Well, that, like I, I know we could get a rough draft in May and then get, get some feedback from you all and have a final draft in June. I mean, it's just a matter of how many committees do we have in this thing, right? And they're going to meet a couple of times each, some of them a little bit more. It's, we can do that. The one thing I would caution us, and I love the idea, especially getting into some of our other buildings for all the reasons we know why, but it does present some logistical difficulties for the, when we televise these meetings, just to keep that in the radar. So I think we should choose them carefully.
Yeah, they cannot be livestreamed.
Yeah.
We know that we can't livestream when we're doing it from location.
Yeah. But we could start looking at, see, that's the only thing, I went on a little more time. We do a rough draft and then if we're going to try to coordinate with events, because you're right, the night that we had the meeting STEM Night backed up was really smart. But yes, we can have something for the May meeting because we're meeting May 13th.
I think that also helps our parents too. We're asking our parents to be involved, right? Like you're already coming out for, you're already coming out for Fine Arts Night, you're already coming out for international, you're right, like...
Most of those are not Tuesdays.
Yeah.
So, so at the, at the point that we are now, we have a list of scheduled dates, time, places, at least for our board meetings and that's set with a possibility of changing one or two, impossibility, I'll leave that there, but also a plan for our committee meetings that we are, we have a goal of having a tentative schedule for May that looks at some baseline meetings, knowing that we can always add more, but that's not final and we'll discuss it in May and then June, whatever feedback or if we're adding or tweaking that, we can work to finalize at least those initial dates. So I'll go back to the motion to accept the regular meetings of the Community Unit School District 201 Board of Education meetings and then a motion and then...
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we move to the appointment of our IASB representative. The chair entertained, well, I nominate Kevin Maron. Any other nominations for that role?
No, but can I second it?
Yes. Sure, Maron. Will turn out to be our outgoing representative. If there are no other nominations, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Kevin Maron as Community Unit School District 201's Illinois Association of School Boards' delegate.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
That sounds like a special ring to us. At this time, we, the chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss personnel issues, student discipline, the superintendent evaluation, and review of closed session minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
So I need someone to take notes, hit record, and then you need to log every time someone comes in now.
Yes.
Board is returning from closed.
By the way, you have access to most of this.
Okay, guys, moving right along. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Personnel recommendations: Ronald O'Connor, CSBO; Stephanie Just, Assistant Principal, Manning Elementary School; Brandy Campbell, Superintendent/Intern; Jessica Vizkara, 4th, 5th grade, dual language math teacher; Megan Veal, Special Education Teacher, Miller; Number 2, approval of the April 2025 expenditure report; and Number 3, ratification of March 2025 regular payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, moving into our information and discussion portion of the evening. Yeah, right? Okay. Every time, every time you like, I'm like, oh crap. Discussion number one, Westmont High School schedule change for the 2025-2026 school year. So just to remind everybody, the admin from Westmont High School came to our last board meeting and gave us a nice presentation on the adjustments that they would like to make to the schedule change, namely not doing early dismissal on Wednesdays. So in Board Docs, you can see that presentation, and then you can also see the approval of it. So is there any?
I had a question, just as it came up, like the being a unit district thing. Are we obligated?
Yeah, yeah.
That, I don't know the answer, but well, I think I know the answer. Are we obligated that all schools do this? Or is it okay that just the high school is not having early dismissal?
It's okay.
Okay. So the elementary school, and then even clearing up confusion for our community, our parents, that this doesn't mean it takes place at the junior high, that they're extending or what have you. This is just the high school.
Yes.
And that's something that's okay at unit district.
Yes.
I really appreciate the administration coming up to speak to us about that and the reasons why, and as many of our decisions is a student-centered decision, and sounds like it's going to have good applications and even something that we can track the data.
And keep kids in the building. Okay, so we will be voting on this in action items later tonight, just a heads up. Okay, number two, summer school 2025. Jack, you want to?
No, we got superstar Dr. Braun here.
Yeah, I can make this, I can make this quick too, because you have it all in front of you.
Do that.
It's because we said the word "data," like you come running.
Yeah, no, I'll highlight the changes for you, just so you know, but it is, it's all, it's all right there. So the only changes from last year to this year, so June boost, so the elementary summer school for incoming firsts through incoming four or five students, or through incoming fifth grade students, it's longer this year. So last year it was only 11 days, this year it's 23 days. So that's the big change there. And then ESY is just growing a little bit. That one is grant funded. Tiffany Teresi is taking the lead on that one, and that one's growing a little bit this year. But the STEM, the jump start to kindergarten was extremely successful last year. We're keeping that again this year. It really was helpful to get those kindergarten students prepared and ready to be in school. And it really was that, it was a jump start to kindergarten, so it was super great. The jump start to dual language was super successful last year, too. Edith Corrington did that one, and made that really fun for our kids, just a cool experience. Yeah, and jump start to kindergarten with Sam Sannovich's baby, and that was awesome, too. But, so that's all the same. The junior high is almost exactly the same. They have their reading and math rising, which is invitation only for incoming sixth through eighth grade students, based on academic performance. The step up for the class of 2020, so that day where the incoming sixth graders come in, and then they have the compact ACC math, which is really helpful for our students to make a jump from Common Core Math to Math 1 for their eighth grade year. And then the high school is the same offerings as last year as well. They have the credit recovery, so kids can, you know, students who are significantly credit and skill deficient, they can have an opportunity to recover some of those credits. The jump to AP Geography is also a really fun, cool experience to help kids transition into that AP Geography. The transitions in English and math, same as last year, to help any students with literacy and math skills who were in literacy workshop or math workshop. Freshman orientation to help with those incoming freshmen. And then the summer bump honors, math pre calc, and it's really to help kids learn at those high levels, so they can have more rigorous coursework. So we're just looking for approval for that today, but it's a lot the same as last year. It was really successful last year, and we're just continue, we want to continue with it.
I have a super quick question. Have all the invites gone out for those invite-only?
They have not yet. Because we were waiting until this meeting. So tomorrow, a lot of them will go out tomorrow, actually.
Awesome, thank you.
Just want to say, for, in 2013, there was no summer school in CUSD 201. Like, no programs. And look what we've evolved to. And it's for every kid, from the kids who are struggling the most, to the kids who failed and need to get boosted back up again, to kids who want to be enriched. It's the whole continuum. It's really special what we fund, and so I could go on and on, but not too long ago, in the Near East, there was nothing, no summer school.
It's really wonderful. And it gets stronger every year. I love that you guys tweak it every year, like, really. There's learning something every year. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Cool. Thank you, Carla.
Okay, moving right along. 2025-2026 student fees.
The question for the board is, do you want to keep this fee status quo increased by 5% or increased by 10%? Did everybody get the document with the breakdowns?
Board update, I believe.
You're saying across the board, 5%, not specifics?
Yes. This is not up for action tonight, correct?
No.
If you want some time to let it simmer, given the hour and given all you've already done this evening, this is hour, this is hour four, but it's okay. Just open it up to...
I guess questions that may not come, but I look to get an answer to, is the difference in what it means from that 5 to the 10%. You know, like, we have not been shy about saying that there are needs in this district that need to be funded. Always looking for it. We're always being innovative of how and where, but hanging on to the hat that we do not increase, you know, or we try to maintain not increasing the fees, but there's still different things that we have, we have responsibility to our students to do, but that comes at a cost, so. I would need, like, a little bit more, like, what does that mean?
You're saying, like, current 5% increase, 10% increase?
Yeah, what does that mean for us to, like, with the needs that we have, do we need to go all the way to the 10%? Just from what we're trying. And I know we have issues where, with fees that are not paid. So we're trying to balance that with the need for our students and what we need to, you know, move forward, so.
Do we, I feel like we've asked about this before, do we track or have a good insight into how those fees are utilized and if they're actually covering the costs of the specific, right? So we've got a $40 fee for soccer, right? All the kids pay it. Is the $40 fee from soccer, do we know that it's actually covering the costs from soccer for that year? Do we have that? I feel like we've asked about it before, but we haven't gotten...
Or technology, that's one, where we pay a tech fee.
Yeah.
Is it answering, or is it supplying the needs? Are we spending more on technology than we're actually getting from, like, I think even that, I don't know how long that will take.
So, like, almost on the spreadsheet, that was part of the board update, like, if there could be another column of, like, totals, like, this is the total cost to the district for this, and this is how much comes in based on fees, and it sounds like, like, that's not something, that sounds like a lot of work, but, but is that, it sounds like kind of what we're asking for.
Yes, it does sound like that.
Yeah, and then also, did we raise fees last year?
No, we did not raise fees last year.
That was the other thing, I thought we wanted to...
When was the last time? Did we raise them?
I think we did have that answer, we have to get it back.
Was it Kevin's last year that we raised them?
And there was only one, I believe it was a one-line item, too, because we raised, like, one of the line items and made a conscious effort to leave the other parts where they were. And I think we kept it at a minimum, so I think, yes, it's probably two, at least two or three years ago, was the last increase with one item, and I think we had the...
Twenty twenty five expenditure report and number three ratification of March twenty twenty five regular payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do you want to?
Okay, moving into our information and discussion portion of the evening of, yeah, right? Okay. Every time, every time you like, I'm like, oh crap. Discussion number one, Westmont High School schedule change for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. So just to remind everybody, the admin from Westmont High School came to our last board meeting and gave us a nice presentation on the adjustments that they would like to make to the schedule change, namely not doing early dismissal on Wednesdays. So in board docs, you can see that presentation and then you can also see the approval of it. So is there any?
I had a question, just as it came up, like the being a unit district thing. Are we obligated?
Yeah, yeah.
That, I don't know the answer, but well, I think I know the answer. Are we obligated that that all schools do this? Or is it okay that just the high school is not having early dismissal?
It's okay.
Okay. That they, so the elementary school and then even clearing up confusion for our community, our parents, that this is, doesn't mean it takes place at the junior high that they're extending or what have you. This is just the high school.
Yes.
And it's, and that's something that's okay at unit district.
Yes.
I, I really appreciate the administration coming up to speak to us about that and the reasons why and as many of our decisions is, is a student centered decision and sounds like it's going to have good applications and even something that we can track the data.
And keep kids in the building.
Mm hmm. Okay, so we will be voting on this in action items later tonight, just heads up. Okay, number two, summer school twenty twenty five. Jack, you want to, are you taking?
No, we got superstar Dr. Braun here.
Yeah, I can make this, I can make this quick too because you have it all in front of you.
Do that.
It's because we said the word data, like you come running.
Yeah, no, I'll highlight the changes for you, just so you know, but it is, it's all, it's all right there. So the only changes from last year to this year, so June boost, so the elementary summer school for incoming firsts through incoming four or five students or through incoming fifth grade students, it's longer this year. So last year it was only eleven days, this year it's twenty three days. So that's the big change there. And then E S Y is just growing a little bit. That one is grant funded. Tiffany Teresi is, is taking the lead on that one and that one's growing a little bit this year. But the STEM, the jump start to kindergarten was extremely successful last year. We're keeping that again this year. It really was helpful to get those kindergarten students prepared and ready to be in school. And it really was that, it was a jump start to kindergarten. So it was super great. The jump start to dual language was super successful last year, too. Edith Corrington did that one and made that really fun for our kids, just a cool experience. Yeah, and jump start to kindergarten with Sam Sannovich's baby and that was awesome, too. But, so that's all the same. The junior high is almost exactly the same. They have their reading and math rising, which is invitation only for incoming sixth through eighth grade students based on academic performance. The step up for the class of twenty twenty, so that day where the incoming sixth graders come in. And then they have the compact ACC math, which is really helpful for our students to make a jump from common core math to math one for their eighth grade year. And then the high schools, the same offerings as last year as well. They have the credit recovery, so kids can, you know, students who are significantly credit and skill deficient, they can have an opportunity to recover some of those credits. The jump to AP geography is also a really fun, cool experience to help kids transition into that AP geography. The transitions in English and math, same as last year, to help any students with literacy and math skills who were in literacy workshop or math workshop. Freshman orientation to help with those incoming freshmen. And then the summer bump honors, math pre calc, calc, and it's really to help kids learn at those high levels so they can have more rigorous coursework. So we're just looking for approval for that today, but it's a lot the same as last year. It was really successful last year and we're just continue, we want to continue with it.
I have a super quick question. Have all the invites gone out for those invite only?
They have not yet.
Okay.
Because we were waiting until this meeting.
Makes perfect sense.
So tomorrow, a lot of them will go out tomorrow, actually.
Awesome, thank you.
Just want to say for, it's, in two thousand thirteen, there was no summer school in CUSD two oh one.
Oh, wow.
I mean, like, no programs. And look what we've evolved to.
Mm hmm.
And it's for every kid, I'm, from the kids who are struggling the most to the kids who failed and need to get boosted back up again, to kids who want to be enriched. It's the whole continuum. It's really special what we fund and so I could go on and on, but not too long ago in the near, there was nothing, no summer school.
It's really wonderful. And it gets stronger every year. I love that you guys tweak it every year, like, really. There's learning something every year. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Cool. Thank you, Carla.
Thanks, Carla.
Okay, moving right along, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six student fees.
The question for the board is, do you want to keep this fee status quo increased by five percent or increased by ten percent? Did everybody get the document with the breakdowns?
Board update, I believe. You're saying across the board, five percent, not specifics?
This is not up for action tonight, correct?
No.
If you want some time to let it simmer, given the hour and given all you've already done this evening, this is hour, this is hour four, but it's okay. Just open it up to.
I guess questions that may not come, but I look to get an answer to is the difference in what it means from that five to the ten percent. You know, like, we have not been shy about saying that there are needs in this district that need to be funded. I'm always looking for it. We're always being innovative of how and where, but hanging on to the hat that we do not increase, you know, or we try to maintain not increasing the fees, but there's still different things that we have, we have responsibility to our students to do, but that comes at a cost, so. I, I, I would need like a little bit more on like, what does, what does that mean for us?
You're saying like current five percent increase, ten percent increase, like?
Yeah, what does that mean for us to, like, with the needs that we have, do we need to go all the way to the ten percent just from what we're trying? And I know we have issues where, with fees that are not paid. So we're trying to balance that with the need for our students and what we need to, you know, move forward, so.
Do we, I feel like we've asked about this before. Do we, uh, track or have a good insight into how those fees are utilized and if they're actually covering the costs of the specific, right? So we've got a forty dollar fee for soccer, right? All the kids pay it. Is the forty dollar fee from soccer, do we know that it's actually covering the costs from soccer for that year? Do we have that? I feel like we've asked about it before, but we haven't gotten, been able to get that deep.
Or technology, that's one where we pay a tech fee.
Yeah.
Is it answering or is it supplying the needs? Are we spending more on technology than we're actually getting from, like, I think even that, I don't know how long that will take.
So like, almost on the, on the spreadsheet that was part of the board update, like, if there could be another column of like totals, like, this is the total cost to the district for this and this is how much comes in based on fees? And it sounds like, like, that's not something, that sounds like a lot of work, but, but I, is that, it sounds like kind of what we're asking for?
Yes, it does sound like that.
Yeah, and then also, did we raise fees last year?
No, we did not raise fees last year.
That was the other thing I, I thought we wanted to try.
When was the last time? Did we raise them?
That was my next question, yeah.
I think we did have that answer, we have to get back.
Was it Kevin's last year that we raised them?
So. And there was only one.
I feel like we have raised them once.
I believe it was a one line item, too, because we raised, like, one of the line items and made a conscious effort to leave the other parts where they were. And I think we kept it at a minimum. So I think, yes, it's probably two, at least two or three years ago, it was our last increase with one item and I think we had the.
This is only my second year.
And we haven't done it.
Of this, and we did not raise last year. I can't really speak to before.
We certainly paused them for at least two years during COVID. I think the only, I think we've only raised them at Kevin's last year.
I think that's accurate. I think they've been raised one time in the last four years.
I think, I mean, personally, I think it's hard to imagine us holding the fees the same again. Everything has gotten significantly more expensive.
What has stayed the same?
Literally nothing has stayed the same and our financial situation has not gotten better also. However, I, I'm less likely to, it's, it's hard to say like, ten percent across the board without really understanding, like, are these fees actually, are they, are they right sized? Are the fees right sized?
That is going to require more work than we can do before May thirteenth, to be real with you, to be able to desegregate it by fee, by account.
So that's what I.
And I'm just going to tell you, I don't think it's that scientific, if you will.
Right.
I think there's an estimation of different costs and fees. It goes into our general budget and then we fund the things we need in this district.
That's, that's said, Jack, I mean, and I get that it's a lot of work to put together an analysis like that. At the same time, if these fees were originally set however long ago and things have, and whether we've increased the fees at two percent a year or not, or whatever it is, they, all they are is a representation of what proportionally made sense at a given time that was probably a long time ago. And so just knowing whether things are right sized, to your, to your point, to just, to just raise them by five percent or seven percent or six point two four, seven percent is just kicking the can down the road a little bit further on, making sure that these fees, not that they cover all the costs, even so much, as that they are proportionally correct is, you know, because it doesn't, if they, and that's just like a, that's a, that's a, there doesn't need to be a detailed analysis to know that.
I, I will get done the best analysis possible for, in the next few weeks. The other thing that might be helpful is to.
We're dealing with an interim CSBO right now.
I mean, I could get behind a, a smaller increase this year to, to start.
And then work on a more detailed.
Ticking up.
Then work on the detail further.
That can make sense, yes.
With a deeper understanding from each and, and, you know, getting the administrators involved, like, what programs, what programs do we even still have anymore? Like, I think about, and this one just always comes to my mind every year, the, the planner, like, is a five dollar fee for a planner that I have thrown out every single year and have attempted to get my children to utilize every single year and have failed pathetically. But I have also never heard anybody who uses the planner, right? So like, if the planner doesn't make sense anymore, like, I don't need to pay five dollars for it, that's a five dollars that could better be utilized, just some, so yeah, I could get behind a smaller across the board increase to, to tweak it up for this year, provided that we then have, have, go into next year and actually really take a look.
Or even like, if part of that fee, like, we know, like, again, not a detailed thing, but we know the activity fee, we are not covering something we need, like, we need a small amount increase, even if we identify a few key areas that we know that has to increase, we have to do something about it. I, I would take that, too. Just like, yes, this is not every line item that is explained, but we know that we don't need.
There's not enough here, yeah.
We know that this team needs new year.
So let me just say this. We could do some kind of analytics on it, no question. We have not raised fees, I'm pretty confident, and at least we've raised them once in the last four or five years, which is, the other thing we could do is a comparison of what other districts are charging to get at least some kind of a fair comparison, so we can do.
I'm working.
When we charge, for instance, if you play soccer and you pay a ninety dollar participation fee, we know darn well that does not cost.
No, of course not.
It just offsets the cost.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I can tell you right now, it, it's not like we run the soccer program based on the fee we charge.
Right.
It's meant to supplement and it's uniform across the board to not, not to encourage participation in one sport over another. So it's a uniform fee.
Right.
So that's the same with, for instance, the, if you, if you want to do a home economics course where there's a lot of food consumption and preparation, it does not pay for the program. It offsets the cost of the program because there's additional costs to being a part of that program, but it certainly does not pay for the program, if that makes sense.
It does.
I think it's importantly said, like, I've said it as a parent, you know, what is this paying for? We've talked about that, too, like, how do we do that without having this long hundred page pamphlet that talks about the home ex fee? But saying something, like, even having that statement said to parents, like, you know, I pay for this every year, I've said it, I pay for this every year, what is it going to? Like, I pay it every year and knowing that we are running supplies and things like that and this is offsetting, so even offset, so, and we, we've talked about that, we don't necessarily have that, but I, I think it's important to be said or presented in a certain way. So much that we have to educate on, but that's still one thing that I've heard other parents say and I've even said it as even a new parent.
Because you don't want it to become another financial document that gets buried. It's like, well, then what happens with it, you know? And so I think that's.
What happens is, to be honest, it offsets the cost of the program. It doesn't pay for the program, it's just because there's an additional user fee for those programs.
Right.
If we didn't have a soccer team or if we didn't have football or volleyball, or if we didn't run home ec, there would be a reduced cost. So it's meant to offset it, but not completely supplant it.
And I think that's a really important clarification to just advertise even more. And I also just, because I don't want anything to get taken out of context, Leo, when you said our financial situation has not gotten better, like, that's not because of anything irresponsible that we've done as a district, it's because of costs and needs and that's, and it's just that.
Well, and it's on, frankly, it's on, yeah.
I know that's not how you intended it, but I really wanted.
I appreciate you, I appreciate you clarifying that. Yeah, frankly, our financial situation from the federal government is on questionable grounds. We don't know.
So there's all kinds of things.
There's a lot of many things outside of our control.
So I can do some kind of a rationale, we could do some kind of a comparison, but the third piece is, we do not, we've only raised it once in the last four years. Is that your recollection, too, Shannon? We have, most years we do not raise the fees, even though the cost of things increases. All right, I can get that ready.
And I do think that also speaks to some of, to some extent, some of what the community says about transparency, right? It's clarity. Hey, this is what this goes to, right? It, it offsets and we've looked at it, we've looked at it.
Every year.
We've paid some attention to it every year. Do we need to talk about, oh, the transportation fee separate? Okay. Okay, any, anything else on student fees? Do you have enough direction?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along, board member resignation. So Ms. Rogers resigned and put in her, her letter of resignation and it does, it is not for, I don't.
It is, it's something that we, you know, well, it's submitted to the board secretary and then the president, that's presented to the board members and Ms. Rogers is, you know, aware that we are, it's not something that we have to formally accept, but we are acknowledging today with her reasoning being for her private reasons. But we, again, I wanted with that, before we kind of go further, like, just acknowledge even her work on a board, you know, it takes a lot to be a part of this and what you give up and the time you give up to do it. So it just, I do want to say we appreciate her volunteering to be a part of this board and giving her expertise during her two-year span. So outside of that is not something that, you know, we kind of display further. Yeah, anyone that wishes to speak to her, try. I would say respect to privacy, but if you're really pressed, you can contact her. But the next thing for us is to kind of discuss.
Yeah, so board policy is that we need to fill open roles within sixty days of, of resignation, so we are within, that started the day of her resignation. We are in a unique situation as far as time is concerned as, as an election has just happened. So a very large portion of the population has said who they would like to be board members. So it leaves us with an option.
I want to, I want to add that a very large portion of the population has said who they would like to be board, and people who wanted the position spoke up prior to that and, and went, and went to, went through the effort of becoming candidates for the role.
Yes, gathered their signatures, put their names on the ballot, went through the process of getting their names on the ballot very recently. So there is some precedent for us to essentially extend the election results to the next.
Most voted.
Next highest vote getter. It would require some suspension of policy. So what we would have to do, because whenever we adjust policy, we have to talk about the policy and then we can adjust it. So essentially, we would have to suspend our, the policy that covers filling in a vacated seat that says the sixty days. So we would suspend that policy and then we could appoint the new, whoever received the next number of votes, if they were interested. There are two other candidates, so we could go back and, and touch base with the person who, who earned the next most votes and then if that person is not interested, we could also go to the person who earned the next, next number of votes. So, but obviously that is a suspending, we should talk about it.
Are we allowed to do, are we allowed to suspend policy in order to do that? It's not illegal, it's not.
That's not, yeah, it's not a law of how we do it. We just, the previous boards and it's common for boards to fill vacancies a certain way. I think the biggest thing that stands is sixty days. That's probably our biggest obligation.
Yeah, what was her exact resignation date? So that we know sixty days from then.
The fifteenth?
I think we received it late at night, so the next, last business day was.
April fourteenth.
April fourteenth.
I mean, I think it makes, I think it makes so much sense because we just had the election and a lot of people in the community, like, just spoke about who they would like to see serve on this board and those people took all those steps, like, that is the most logical thing. My only, gather signatures, my only hesitancy is that that's not what we've been doing in the recent past and so, like, I just want to make, like, but those were different times that those, there were vacancies, right?
We were nowhere near, we were nowhere near an election any of those times.
Then, then I think that makes perfect sense to proceed in a different way. That's my opinion.
Yeah, where's that policy? I agree. Election just happens.
Yeah.
So, and this isn't something we have to decide today, but definitely having this discussion and open to say where we are. The one thing I like to point out that either way it goes, we are appointing someone. The board appoints them. So going through that against having someone present a letter, get references, candidates had to get fifty signatures as a reference and present themselves to the board of elections. Actually, I feel like they've done more to make themselves a candidate than to write a letter to the board and we appoint them. So that's already some standards that have been put, but either way it goes, the, the board is appointing a member. The other times we were not close to an election and they even have that in our policies. If you're so close.
Yeah.
Then you await the election if there's so many years left. I believe with this one, the person who's appointed will finish out the two years and then if they want to remain, they have to run and be elected, but.
Yeah, so I just, I just double checked. So it's, it's policy two dash seven zero, that is the policy to fill a vacancy and policy two dash two forty does allow the board to suspend any policy not required by law or contract. So this policy is not required by law or contract, it's something that, that we have, that is board policy that we've taken on, so we can.
You had to be waiving it, not suspending it.
We would be waiving or suspending the policy, either, either or essentially. And it can be done in a separate vote or it can be done in combination with the vote to appoint a person to fill the vacancy.
That's how you would write the motion. Real quick, just thinking about the timeline, so we said sixty days from the fourteenth of April, is that right?
Mm hmm.
And we don't meet again until the thirteenth of May.
Mm hmm.
So by the time we get the chance to meet again, we all, we will have burnt thirty days if neither of those two candidates wants the position.
Yes.
So should we discuss real quickly what we will do if neither of them want the position?
So it's Tuesday. I can reach out to both of them if need be to get an answer on that and have it in the board update by this Friday.
Okay.
I think, yeah, I think with, with knowing that answer, kind of having a caveat to say that we are proceeding, I think either way, well, if for some reason they say no or this board is not interested in doing that, that, that all likelihood is that we'll have an extra meeting. And we've done that before, but we have a special meeting.
We'll have, we'll have an extra meeting, yeah, special meeting.
And some of that time we're putting in is special times to interview. So we, more dates that we need to start to at least think about and come up with as we find out these answers.
You guys recall, we had at least two special meetings for interviews for both, for both times that we've filled roles and then another special meeting to appoint. So it, it would put us in a, regardless, it's kind of regardless, it's special.
Proactively plan the dates and then if we don't need them, we don't need them.
I just wanted to understand how we would proceed. I mean, we don't, we may not need to have the dates, so we don't have to spend too much time on that. I just wanted to make sure I understood what Plan B is in case Plan A doesn't work out, that's all. And Plan B would be that we would schedule a special board meeting sometime between now and the thirteenth of May, right?
Well, at the very, we have to put, submit it and have, give people time to submit their request, or their desire to be placed and then we're just scheduled times to interview.
So you're saying that potentially it could be, it could be added to the May thirteenth?
So, so.
Agenda.
The first thing, if that, so by Friday, okay, we would know if, if we all want to, if we want to go with option A, by Friday I can have an answer for the board. If on Friday that answer is nobody's interested, Saturday the position can be posted. So the posting has to happen first. So, and then, you know, and then we decide, right? Seven or fourteen days, probably seven to get your applications in or fourteen days to get your applications in, which kind of puts us around like the thirteenth. So probably if we were to do interviews, it would be like the last two weeks of May, regardless, because we'd have to have some time for applications to come in, for us to, we could potentially review those applications on the thirteenth in closed session because it's, it's personnel and then go from there and, I mean, it would be tight, but we would get it under the wire.
I got it.
For, I mean, as clarification, for option A, would we first, so it, it could be also for that timeline, May thirteenth, suspend our protocols and then placement of a person that same day?
Yeah, same day, same meeting, yes. I think we can actually do it in the same motion, actually, yes.
Great, efficient.
Yeah. So is that, is option A?
The direction we're giving you is to that.
Yes.
Can, we are like straw polling that we are on board with seeing if the previous candidates are, I guess the, the next candidate is interested in that and then.
That's what everybody wants to do?
Yes.
Okay. Look in the board update on Friday? Okay, we'll have an answer on Friday and see where we go from there. Any other comments on that? Okay, next.
Can I just say, too?
Yeah.
This has been reviewed by our council, so.
Yes.
It's not like.
Oh, yes, before we ever.
Yeah.
Just so you know, they're kind of understanding.
So the last piece we need to discuss is the potential addition of a transportation fee, so I'm, if you recall, this has been in the conversation for a number of years. Transportation is one of our most uncontrollable, highest expenses and it has really gotten rough since COVID. So it's been in, it's been in the conversation. I know that the, the business office has tossed around potentially adding a transportation fee over the last number of years. We're talking about this as a separate discussion item because, because we have all of our existing fees, right? And, and if we're going to do anything with those. And, and if we're going to do anything with those existing fees, but this would be a new fee. Yeah.
Jack, you got?
It's, you'd be surprised at what a limited scope it, it contains. Shannon, can you help me with that? I mean, I've heard it will only impact 60 students in the whole district because we're required to give transportation to students who have to cross major barriers. So.
CAS, Ogden, train tracks.
Well, only parts of CAS. So the Manning, Manning-Miller, that is not considered hazardous. If you're crossing between Ogden and the tracks, if you cross CAS from, to get to Manning side is not hazardous. We've not been able to get that deemed hazardous. They've tried a couple of times with the state.
So it's like only the downtown area?
Yeah, so it's really between Ogden and the tracks and those kids, so it really only picks, impacts kids going to Manning and Miller. Would be a greater number of kids using it. Chris ran the numbers for me roughly, and it's a really rough number, you know, it's about 60 kids.
Out of 12 or 13.
Right, because if you're free and reduced, those still apply to the fee. So she removed those names. So out of the 600 kids, I guess, between those two schools, we have, you know, 10%.
Are you, I'm sorry, you're saying that's how many people we would collect a transportation fee from?
Yeah, just roughly currently based on what we have in Skyward.
Do we, do we know if those 60 people actually utilize transportation?
Well, that, we can't say every day, or they could be one day a week, it could be.
Yeah, because we, because we offer it, right? So it's hard to tell if they are actually users of transportation or walkers of transportation.
The other thing to our district's credit is many districts charge a significant transportation fee and we do not. We have no fee for transportation that I'm aware of, correct?
Yeah, but we have a lot of hazardous crossings.
I'm just saying, it's standard practice to charge a transportation fee and this district does not.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I feel really stupid just because there's nothing on here. What are, what are we, what are we trying to ask? What is the, to add a transportation fee?
Well, we just, it's been put on for, for consideration. I'm going to tell you to not, for 60 kids and what will be taken from that, I'm willing to table it.
Yeah.
I don't think it's.
Yeah, I honestly, I'm confused why it's only 60 kids and not like everybody who gets transportation.
No, a lot of people are, are, we're required to provide transportation.
Yeah. We're required to provide transportation for everybody essentially within a two-mile radius, and ours entire district is a two-mile radius. And then the hazardous crossings, so if you have to cross, if you have to cross the train tracks, so everybody south of 50, south of the train tracks, we are required without a fee to cover their transportation, anywhere, because none of our.
These are people who aren't in that cohort who are getting transportation.
Yeah, so they would have to be.
With a mile and a half.
That's the proposal.
So even like Oakwood, right? Oakwood, you would have to cross Ogden and CAS to get to any of our other schools on the south. So everybody in Oakwood would be required to have, we're required to cover transportation to all of the elementaries. And then the elementaries essentially going north, right? If you're in the downtown area, again, you're, anywhere you have to cross CAS or Ogden, which is where the junior high and the high school are, we're required to cover. So it's really like, yeah, it's 60 kids.
Honestly, I hate to be that person right now, but given how late it is and there's not even like an overview or information document, like I just, I, the access, like, I think we just table this for now, I don't even know what we're talking about.
It's something we've, we wanted that's on there because we have this stuff. And some of the history is that because we went to grade level centers, like before grade level centers, we didn't, Miller-Manning, there was no bus.
Right.
You, you walk, there's no, not even an option, even for parents that said, hey, if I could pay, can we get a bus? But it became a new thing, not new, but, but it's with our transportation overall and the cost that it incurs. It was something that was, and it came with information, like we had to do our study of who would this apply to. And so we had that as part of the discussion we didn't have before. And we have numbers that say, is it, are we going to ask, is it worth it? But still, something needs to be done with transportation costs. So that's not it.
So it sounds like there's not interest from the board in continuing to look at a transportation fee.
Okay.
Moving into action items. So board action on closed session minutes. So just a reminder that we do district closed session minutes, standard operating procedure once a year, that's what this is. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the board action on closed session minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Rule call.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Motion passes. So number two, destruction of verbatim closed session minutes. So again, this is an Open Meetings Act, requires a biannual review of our closed session minutes. Verbatim records can be recommended for destruction, no less than 18 months following approval of the written minutes. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the destruction of the verbatim closed session minutes from March 1st, 2023 to August 30th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Rule call.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms., Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Motion passes. Approval of the Westmont High School schedule change for the 25, 26 school year, as we discussed earlier tonight and at the last meeting, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the changes to the Westmont High School schedule as presented.
So moved.
Second. Rule call.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, approval of the summer school plans for summer 2025. Thanks to the admin teams for updating and tweaking this. We got a presentation out earlier tonight. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the 2025 summer school plans as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Rule call.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, and approval of the Title I school-wide waiver. So again, there's a memo in here in public docs that explains this one in a little bit more detail. This is a standard process that we do once a year to get our Title I. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the Title I school-wide waivers for Miller, Manning, and Westmont High School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Rule call.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Ra, or Ms. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, approval of the summer school plans for summer 2025. Thanks to the admin teams for updating and tweaking this. We got a presentation out earlier tonight. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the 2025 summer school plans as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Rule call.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, the next two are again standard items that we do once a year, the title grants and Title I. So the first one is approval of consolidated plan for title grants. There is a memo in here in public content that shows our title grants and some details on it and the grant application as well. Any questions? Cool. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consolidated district plan for title grants as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Rule call.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, and approval of the Title I school-wide waiver. So again, there's a memo in here in public docs that explains this one in a little bit more detail. This is a standard process that we do once a year to get our Title I. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the Title I school-wide waivers for Miller, Manning, and Westmont High School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Rule call.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Ra, or Ms. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, the next two are again standard items that we do once a year, the title grants and Title I. So the first one is approval of consolidated plan for title grants. There is a memo in here in public content that shows our title grants and some details on it and the grant application as well. Any questions? Cool.
No, I just, I appreciate the cost comparison and breakdown. Yeah, that's, it was super helpful and this makes 100% sense.
Yeah, because it is a little bit more, but when you take into account that it is actually replacing two things.
That it works.
And gives us much more ability, like, yeah. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the three-year contract with LineWise in the amount of $49,530 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Rule call.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, approval of the summer school plans for summer 2025. Thanks to the admin teams for updating and tweaking this. We got a presentation out earlier tonight. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the 2025 summer school plans as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Rule call.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, the next two are again standard items that we do once a year, the title grants and Title I. So the first one is approval of consolidated plan for title grants. There is a memo in here in public content that shows our title grants and some details on it and the grant application as well. Any questions? Cool. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consolidated district plan for title grants as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Rule call.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, and approval of the Title I school-wide waiver. So again, there's a memo in here in public docs that explains this one in a little bit more detail. This is a standard process that we do once a year to get our Title I. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the Title I school-wide waivers for Miller, Manning, and Westmont High School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Rule call.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Ra, or Ms. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, moving right along, superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to be very brief here. If I can get this thing to advance, can somebody give me, is there?
You've got to scroll through, it's a PDF, Carla. That's how it downloaded, he just has to.